Good evening, Twinsburg families, friends, and staff. I'm Mark Curtis, and I am proud to serve as your Board President. Although our summer break is winding down, there is a lot happening in and around our district. Work continues on our buildings and grounds in preparation for the return of our students. And our district leadership team has been hard at work developing strategic plans that are aligned to the work that was started almost four years ago to move the district forward. Monday marks the beginning of our activities for all of our fall sports, and we're looking forward to watching our student athletes compete on and off the field. Also, our board recently passed a second resolution that is required for placing a 6.9 mil renewal levy on the ballot in November. Now, as we continue to keep you abreast of what's happening financially through two independent audits of our finances and our five-year forecast, the renewal levy dollars represent a significant portion of our current operating revenues. It's critical that we maintain our current level of funding and we continue to work toward finding ways to reduce our spending while at the same time continuing to deliver high-quality education to our students. To that end, I would like to formally welcome our newest member of our team, our district treasurer and CEO, Mrs. Julia Razania. Through careful planning and coordination, we are happy that she's been able to successfully transition into her new role as she officially began her duties August 1st. So we look forward to working with her and helping us chart the future of this district financially. This concludes my president's report for this evening, and I will now turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Mrs. Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Good evening, Board of Education. Mrs. Razania, welcome aboard. And of course, to members of our audience who are here this evening or are watching from home or on taped version of the board meeting, thank you for tuning into our Board of Education meeting. This is a really busy time in the school district as we continue to prepare for the coming school year. This week administrators are finalizing schedules and meetings to plan the school year. I know that our families need information about the coming school year, and as such, Board of Education, after this meeting tonight, I'm going back to the board office finishing up our family letter, and it will be put in the mail tomorrow. So our families should be receiving their back-to-school letter, if not on Saturday, then Monday of next week. And also, the bus routes will be mailed on Friday of this week. So parents look forward to receiving a lot of information in the next couple of days, and we hope the information is helpful to you as we get underway in the new school year. Our school supply lists can be found on the district website. And a reminder that this weekend is Ohio's tax-free weekend, so you can purchase school supplies without having to pay the sales tax on Friday, August 5th, through Sunday, August 7th. Before I proceed too much farther here in my comments, I want to introduce for the first time formally our new business manager, Mr. Matt Strickland. Welcome.
Thank you.
Do you want to say a few things about you and your family, and where you've come from, and what you're excited about?
Absolutely, yeah. So I was prior the business manager at Nordonia Hill City Schools, just our next-door neighbor here. My wife and I and our six kids live over in Northfield Center. I am very excited to be a Tiger, very excited to join this team, very thankful for the opportunity.
Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
It's good to have a buddy right here next to me. And also, Board of Education, Mr. Bandiera is here this evening too. He is our new Director of Pupil Services, not a stranger to the Twinsburg City School District, as he served as one of our fantastic intervention specialists at George D. Dodge Intermediate School. Mr. Bandiera, want to come up and just say a few words about coming back home and now being at the helm of our pupil services department?
Yeah, should we turn that? Thank you, Board of Education. First off, I thank you for your confidence in me, and I thank you for the opportunity. It's great to come back. As Mrs. Powers said, I had the opportunity to be an intervention specialist here in district about six years ago, and then also an alumni of Twinsburg. So very excited for that. And previously took a little vacation in Chardin, came back to Twinsburg now, and I'm really happy for your opportunity. And yeah, thank you.
So Mr. Bandiera and Mr. Strickland have been very busy moving the district forward. They assimilated with Mr. Welker and Mrs. Honeycutt the last couple of weeks, and now are at the helm of their departments, and we're excited for them, and I'm very glad that they're part of our Tiger family now, so welcome again. Board, as you know, this is Twins Day's weekend in our community, and we are excited to see all of the visitors who will be coming here the next several days. The theme for this 47th Annual Twins Days Festival is "Welcome to the Jungle." Get it, "to"? So I would imagine the parade on Saturday will have a lot of jungle themes to it, so it should be a fascinating, fascinating day and weekend. Congratulations to Mr. Andy Miller and the Twins Days Committee for planning what we know will be a wonderful weekend where we are sure we're going to be seeing double from probably tomorrow through Sunday night. So we're looking forward to a great festival. It's always wonderful to meet so many people who come back every year. Last year, when I drove the golf cart on Saturday morning from the parking lot to the parade route, taking our visitors, and those of us who drive the golf carts keep track of the visitors' travel and where they've come from. And it is so interesting, most of our visitors are here in consecutive years, and the farthest pair of twins that we had happened to come from China one year. And so it's always fun to see where they've traveled from and why they come back year in and year out. So we look forward to helping at the Twins Days Festival, welcoming our visitors, and just having some fun here in our community this coming weekend. This is one last reminder to our new families or families of our kindergarten students that the district will hold new student registration next week on Tuesday, August 9th, and Thursday, August 11th. I thank Mrs. McKinney for being in charge of that. Last night, we had a number of families register, and she was busy all night, and she's always so graceful and welcoming, and so I know our new families were welcomed in Tiger fashion that is Mrs. McKinney. So thank you to you and the administrative assistants who were here last evening getting that important work done. Our district website has information about new student registration, and we ask that our new parents kindly follow the directions found under the "For Parents" tab, and then "Registration and Enrollment," and then that links over to the website. Early registration helps our school districts plan and so that we can be ready to welcome your children on the very first day of our school year. Board, the annual report and district calendar is at the printers, and we expect that to be in the mail on August 12th. In the past, we would often have the district calendar as an insert in the Twinsburg Bulletin, but the Bulletin has been struggling with its home delivery of late, and we want to make sure that our families get the calendar. They depend on it. So it will be mailed to mailboxes on August 12th, and you can look forward to receiving it. It has so much great information, a look back from last year's events, and I look forward to see what we have planned for this coming school year. This evening, Board of Education, talking about our students, I am so delighted to introduce to you one of our Twinsburg High School alum from the class of 2022, Logan Pride, and she is looking beautiful as always, but even more special this evening because she was recently crowned the Miss Black Ohio America Teen. What a huge accomplishment for Logan. Logan is the daughter of Amante and Cody Pride of Twinsburg. And Board of Education, the Miss Black Ohio pageant's vision is to reach all African-American females ages 12 to 28 to empower them to be leaders in our communities. As you know, Board of Education, Logan was already a leader, so very well-known at the high school and throughout our community, a leader on and off the court. She's a star basketball player or was for Twinsburg, and she's off to play basketball in college. And so I want Logan, if she wouldn't mind, to come forward and explain a little bit more about this pageant and what it was like and what it felt like to win the crown. It's beautiful.
Hey, Logan, why don't you just pick it up and just turn it all the way around?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there we go. There we go.
All right. Well, thank you guys so much for having me here, and thank you, Ms. Powers, for allowing me to be speaking to you guys today. I just remember that I was in English class one day, and I was like, oh, there's a pageant. And I'm like, well, do I have the confidence? And I'm like thinking that being a Tiger, I learned a lot about my pride and just being a leader. So in English class, I signed up for a pageant, and that pageant was amazing. I wanted to share it along with other girls in Cleveland area and Twinsburg area because it is based in Columbus. It is not as huge as other pageants are, but it is a state pageant that I feel like this should be well more known. And it was a really big jump for me. I wasn't able to travel down there, but I was given the same experience as other girls were, and I never felt like an outcaster there, and that is something huge. I never felt like that in Twinsburg, so it was good to know that I can still be myself outside of school. So the pageant was amazing. It taught me a lot about sisterhood. And as being a minority and a person of color, it is really hard to know what a good friend is, and I learned a lot through the pageant of just being a young adult at this age. And I'm like, okay, I am smart, I am beautiful, and I'm confident. So I was amazed to know that I won. My goal is to also help other girls, younger or even older, who have low self-esteem, and whether they're athlete, musician, or artist, a student, I want them to know that you can do what you want to do as long as you believe in yourself and know that there is a village around you, and I think Twinsburg, because I felt that village and confidence to be like signing up in English class. But also to the pageant, I really encourage so many people who are listening or who know other young girls between 12 and 28. And I know other pageants that usually get a bad reputation for pageants, but I want to change the culture and let them know like, there's so much more to, I'm sorry, there's so much more to pageants than the looks and the, oh, you have to wear heels and be a certain like body image. No, the pages are growing from that stigmatic like culture, so I really want to help people with that. But thank you guys so much for allowing me to speak and honoring me today. Thank you.
Okay. So before we go into order of me, I'm going to present you with a proclamation, so I'll come down and present that to you. But I want to give our board members individually, if you want to express any comments or reflect on, you know, her experience or whatnot, like, let's take an opportunity to do that now, and then I can do the formal proclamation or presentation.
I feel like we're living that Miss Congeniality movie where they take all the myths away. But no, congratulations, you're representing your family and Tigers and, you know, just all of Ohio, and it's great to see that.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I really appreciate you coming and sharing everything about this, and the impression that I get from you is that this was more about being a positive role model, a positive influence for young women, and, you know, not just about what is typical and stereotypical. And you look like you definitely represent the way you carry yourself, the way you've spoken of your experiences, that you fit this perfect role for that role model and what you've done.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for taking the risk. You stepped out of a comfort zone and filled out a form in a class, is what it sounds like I'm hearing you say. And that is a message right there for your friends and colleagues to not be afraid to take that chance, because look where it took you. So congratulations.
Yes, I remember, I think I told my history teacher, and she was encouraging me, and my friends in English, they were like, do it, do it. So yes, Twinsburg definitely supported me a lot in that, and thank you guys so much.
Just want to say congratulations, I'm so proud of you, and to your parents should definitely be proud. It's wonderful to see you up here today and your grace and appreciation for everything, and to be such a role model, like Leah stated, like, to be able to go ahead and do that is very inspirational to me and to others. So thank you so much for doing this. I would love to see footage if we have any.
Yeah, and same, I'll echo what my colleague said, but specifically, young black girls need to see things like this, because when they do, they can aspire to be more. So not only do you represent the city of Twinsburg very well, you represent the African-American community very well in an exceptional way. You make me proud, and I'm, you know, ecstatic that you're being graced with this honor. So I also offer congratulations to you.
You guys made my day. Thank you all so much.
Logan, can you introduce who came with you tonight?
Yes, my beautiful sister, who just turned 16, came with me, and my lovely grandma is here too. And in the corner is my number-one fan, my beautiful mother over there. She's amazing, guys. Like, she can do everything, and I'm like, wow.
Three generations.
Okay, well, I'm gonna come on down.
Just question, is this something that the English class promotes, or is this just something that just happened?
It's okay.
I, maybe we should. I think that'd be really cool. I think that is also like every year, so I would hope that more schools talk about pageants, because I feel like it's something not really talked about in school. So maybe we can like set up something and just say, hey, guys, there's a pageant coming down.
I would love to like talk to you and get this like known to our, like, you know, for you to like be that inspiration and get other girls in our school to be encouraged to start through this.
Yes, I love that. Thank you.
Logan, can you remind everyone where you're going to college and what you're studying?
I am going to Ohio Dominican University, and I'm studying computer science. Shout out to Miss Houston.
Okay, so I'm gonna do a little Barker deal here. Just gonna hold it, and I'm gonna read it, because it's a little awkward just doing it from the podium. So, "Chris is a proclamation honoring Logan Pride as Miss Black Ohio American Teen. Whereas the Twinsburg City School Board, uh, School District takes pride in its students' involvement in the community, and whereas the Miss Black Ohio American Pageant's mission is to reach African-American females in Ohio to empower them to be leaders in the community through pageantry, and whereas Logan Pride, a 2022 graduate of Twinsburg High School, was crowned Miss Black Ohio American Teen on June 11th, 2022, in Columbus, Ohio. And whereas Logan's accomplishments while attending Twinsburg High School include participation in the orchestra, on the track and field team, on the superintendent's advisory council, and on the Tigerette Drill Team, as well as leadership with the Varsity Girls Basketball Team. And whereas Logan's title will give her the opportunity to meet and mentor other young ladies in the state of Ohio and encourage them to strive for academic excellence, leadership in their community, and participation in the pageant system. And whereas Logan Pride's commitment to leadership, service, and the community is reflected in her accomplishment of being crowned Miss Black Ohio American Teen 2022. Now, therefore be it resolved that we, Mark Curtis, President of the Twinsburg Board of Education, and Catherine M. Powers, Superintendent of the Twinsburg City School District, do hereby honor Logan Pride and on her achievement of Miss Black Ohio American Teen.
Board of Education, would you mind having a look in the logo?
Of course.
This is so beautiful. Thank you.
Yes.
And how does family do it? Oh, this is cool, yeah. Come on. It's a family. I'll try to convert it for me. Yeah. It's a Chinese. It's a beautiful. Yeah. That's beautiful. We are gonna have it. Beautiful nature. Thank you.
All right. Congratulations.
I'm so proud of you. I mean that.
You can, okay. That's me.
I know.
Okay, we'll move on with the rest of our agenda. We'll move on to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports to speak of?
Yes, the Policy Committee met earlier in the week. We went through the ORC and legislative updates, and we've updated quite a few of our policy pieces, most of them just tweaking and adding in the changes that put us in line with what's required by the law.
Okay. Any other committees? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to item F for discussion. Again, turn it over to the superintendent for her report on the district reopening plan.
Thank you, Board of Education, and thank you for celebrating Logan. What a wonderful inspiration, as Mrs. Crawford said, for all of our students. It's too bad she's headed off to college now, because it would be nice to have her celebrated with our students. Maybe we could do that when she's home on a break. Board of Education, this evening, I have a bit of a presentation and then an opportunity for discussion, because some of this is just factual about how we're reopening the school year, but then we have some parts of this presentation that are more conversational with regard to how we will operate under still the COVID environment that continues to be the case here in our country and in our community. First of all, just a reminder that our soft reopening week schedule was sent home to families at the end of July, on July 29th. But in case anybody missed it, here we have it. Now, Mr. Strickland, if Mr. Welker were here...
Is that a Nordonia clicker?
I'm just kidding. There you go.
There we go.
Okay, so anyhow, for the sake of the families who may have missed the email, we will be sending this schedule home in our back-to-school mailer as well. But just so everyone knows, for our students in preschool through grade eight, the soft reopening days are scheduled, as is being shown now on the screen, first Tuesday, August 16th, students with last names beginning with A through G, and then Wednesday, beginning with H through P, and then Thursday, students in preschool through grade eight with last names beginning with Q through Z, and any families who have multiple last names in their families, they would be coming to school on Thursday. That's just a lot easier, instead of moms and dads trying to figure out this child goes this day and this child goes this day. A family who has multiple last names, they would all go on that last day of the week being Thursday in preschool through grade eight. Yes, through grade, through grade eight. Thank you. And then as far as the soft reopening schedule for our high school students, it's looking different this year, and I really like the change that was suggested by our high school administrators. Tuesday, August 16th, will be the soft reopening day for grades 10 and 11, and Wednesday, August 17th, would be for grades nine and 12. It lets our seniors have a couple more days of vacation before they have to report, and it also keeps our ninth graders in the routine of coming to school, because Thursday is a day at the high school where all students will be reporting. Thursday is not a soft reopening day at Twinsburg High School. It is the first full day of classes for our high school students. Then Friday, August 19th, is a day-to-day, and our students do not report. You may ask, well, what's going on on that day-to-day? Well, when the students report for those soft reopening days, the teachers will begin to collect some baseline data about where students' mastery of skills are, and so they'll be working with their teams of teachers to put together classwork, to put together programs of intervention, or programs of acceleration for students. So the 19th is a busy day for the staff. We don't plan any curriculum meetings. It's a day for them to work together and to really get a good hold on where their students are, so that on the very first full day of school, which is Monday, August 22nd, teachers hit the ground running. They know who is in their classroom, they know what their strengths, the students' strengths are, they know which students might need some intervention, or which students can really begin to accelerate. And so we find that soft reopening days very beneficial, and so we appreciate the board's support of that now in its third year. The next slide, it's hard to see here this evening, you have a copy of it before you, and this is the school schedule that you approved several meetings ago. We will, of course, post this on the district website. The only school that changed from last year was the middle school, and it was changed just by five minutes, and that's because of the transportation routes. We needed a five-minute buffer here. And so for the sake of our middle school parents, the students' start time will be 7:20, and their end time is 2:15. And for the sake of all the other buildings, they remain the same as the 21-22 school year. And again, this schedule will be posted on the front page of our website, so parents can easily access it. Breakfast and lunch prices were approved by the board back on May 4th, I believe, and there they are. Remember, Board of Education and families, the summer seamless program is no longer available from the federal government, and so beginning the first day of school, students will be either packing their lunch or buying their lunch. And if a parent has the need to submit for the federal lunch and breakfast meal program, on the next slide is the link to the application process. This is a brand-new process. The neat thing about this is as soon as the parent submits their information, the results are quickly known. So a parent will know immediately whether or not their child qualifies for free meals, reduced-price meals, or if they're denied based on the family's income level. So we will include this link on my back-to-school mailer. It's been sent home already once a couple weeks ago, but we do encourage our families to get to this important task pretty early, so that the first day of school, their children either have brought their lunch, will buy a lunch, or will be eligible for the federal meal program. With regard to backpacks, this was a hot conversation, I think, this summer, of parents wondering what was going on with backpacks for this coming school year. What we have decided, and that is we being the building administrators and central office staff, is that students in preschool through the sixth grade are able to bring their backpack of choice. They are stored in cubbies or lockers and the boys and girls then proceed to the classroom. With students in grades seven through 12, they can bring a backpack of choice if that's what they would like, but those backpacks of choice must be kept in the lockers for the duration of the school day. If a student is interested in carrying a backpack throughout Twinsburg High School or RB Chamberlain Middle School, that backpack must be a clear backpack. No other backpacks will be carried or allowed in the halls during the school day at either of our two secondary buildings. The next part of this presentation just talks about school safety measures. And Board of Education, we appreciate what you did back on June 22nd when you passed the resolution, and in part it read, "To prohibit any person, including board employees, from bringing any dangerous weapons, including firearms, or any ordinance into any school safety zone in the Twinsburg City School District." There is the exception, if you are a law officer and you have jurisdiction within the Twinsburg City School District. Of course, if you are an SRO, if you are a patrol officer, if you're Chief Mason, they would be able to carry a gun onto school property, but nobody else would per your board resolution. And we received a lot of positive comments about the board coming out strongly, making the statement, and it's been made well-known. So thank you for taking the time to pass that resolution in June. It really curbed some emotion and a lot of anxiety for your actions, so thank you. The next thing I wanted to remind everyone in regard to school safety measures is the fact that our district's emergency management plans were just re-reviewed and submitted to the Attorney General's Office. That happened back in June. Before they were submitted to the Attorney General's Office, I met with Chief Mason, Chief Morgan, Assistant Chief Basso. They authorized these plans. They had some good feedback for us, which we appreciated. And once the feedback was then used to revise the plans, they were submitted to the Attorney General's Office. I'm delighted to tell you that all five of our school plans, as well as the district plan, has been authorized. These plans are not public knowledge, they're not public, they're not public records, I should say. And so if we were to ever have a bad day here in the school district, the local law enforcement have access to these plans, they know how we would react, we know how we will react. We know how we will react. And so that's the purpose for those plans. Does anybody have any questions about the emergency management plans? I can share any details with you tonight. Okay. Next up, the topic here is our school resource officers. Board of Education, as you know, last year, we had Officer Frisella and Officer Beata for the majority of the year. Officer Frisella was at the high school. And Officer Beata was at RBC. Chief Mason became Chief Mason after Chief Noga retired. And he started to rearrange his office here in the Twinsburg Police Department. At that point, Patrolman Beata became Sergeant Beata, and he was moved back to the police department. Retired Officer Craig Bremner was then employed as our additional school resource officer. And he replaced Officer Beata at the middle school. Moving into this coming year, I'm delighted to tell you that Patrol Officer Nate Milhone is our new patrol officer, who is now the school resource officer at the middle school. And Officer Bremner becomes the school resource officer that covers three campuses, those of the elementary schools. What I have requested of Chief Mason, as you know, is that we would have an additional two resource officers so that each of our schools will have its own resource officer on every day of the school year. We are working through that negotiation now. I hope to have an update for you at the next board meeting. But I wanted to thank you for allowing us to have that conversation. It's important, I think, to our staff, to our parents, especially to our students, to have a school resource officer at each of our buildings. The next thing is the security liaisons. For many, many years, Anthony Byrd and Phil Schmuck have been the security liaisons at Twinsburg High School. The one thing that we recognize, Board, is that we do a great job of school security during the school day. But when the dismissal bell rings and we have athletes and activities and parents and visitors and everybody's coming in and out of the buildings, we don't have dedicated people to make sure that those who are inside are supposed to be and those who are outside are safe. So thank you for allowing us to post for five additional security liaisons. Mr. Strickland and Mrs. McKinney were interviewing earlier today for those positions. Those positions will be flexible in their schedules. And what I mean is during fall sports, we'll have one in the high school, one in the middle school for the indoor activities. The other three will be scheduled to be outside on our fields, the stadium, making sure that there are extra eyes out there just to protect our students and our visitors and our families. And then when we hit the winter sports season and everything shifts inside, we will reschedule the security liaisons accordingly. So we look forward to adding an additional layer of security through security liaisons. Mr. Schmuck and Mr. Byrd do a great job taking care of the matter over at the high school. We want to replicate that in the afternoon and evening hours just to make sure that our families, our students, and our visitors are safe. Any questions about the security liaison? We're really proud of the fact that on March, I'm sorry, on October 5th, Mr. Strickland and I have been working behind the scenes to participate in the planning for the full-scale crisis drill in which our district will participate. The city of Twinsburg, the city of Reminderville, the Community Emergency Response Team, known as CERT, our local healthcare facilities and other Summit County partners will assist the school district in conducting a crisis drill. Much more information about that will be known as we get on our way here. Matt and I have several more meetings planned with our partners to work through some of the details. We will be asking for volunteers, employees who are volunteers that day to assist us. And there will be some opportunities for some of our students, high school students, who may want to participate in the drill to do that. One of the big parts of the drill that we want to test is our reunification process. If we ever have a bad day, and I hope we never do, one of the things that will be critically important is that we have a process in place by which we would reunify our students or our staff members with their loved ones. And although it seems like that shouldn't be a problem, there is a process you have to follow to make sure that you know who is with you and who's going home with who and in what condition they're going home and the resources that we need to have available should we have a crisis here in our school community. So although we never, ever, ever want to have anything like this happen in real time, a real situation, it's all about the planning beforehand. And to have the community partners that we do who are willing to meet us at these places where we are, allowing us to test some of our systems while they'll be testing their systems as well. And then at the end of the drill, to be able to evaluate the drill. What did we do well? What didn't we do well? What do we need to improve? This will be a very important event here in our school community in October. That happens to be a day-to-day again. So we won't have students on campus. And teachers and staff members will be engaged in activities. But we will be able to conduct a drill without necessarily much upheaval unto what they're doing. We can relocate staff members who do not want to participate. But I think for the staff members who do desire to participate, it will be a very good exercise. And we will all walk away learning a lot, I believe. In addition, when you think of school safety, one of the things that comes up very often now is mental health and having a healthy social and emotional well-being. And so, Board of Education, I want to thank you for allowing us to use part of our ESSER dollars to expand the positions that we have in our Beechbrook contract. Thanks to your approval, we will have four additional Beechbrook social workers here on staff that will help with many resources for students who are in trauma, students who are in crisis, families who need resources. I can't say enough about our Beechbrook partners. And so this will allow us to have additional help here on campus moving into this coming school year. Additionally, thank you for allowing us to use ESSER funds for just this next school year to employ an additional assistant principal at Twinsburg High School. Those of you who know much about Twinsburg High School know that we have three assistant principals and one principal right now. Well, we have four grade levels. And so what happens usually is that the freshman class is divided amongst the three assistant principals. So they would have responsibility for, say, the 10th graders plus one-third of the 9th graders. Given the fact that this freshman class will have been on three campuses, this is the third campus in three years for our freshman class, we want to make sure that we're able to ground the students the very first day at school. And so we want somebody to be paying attention to the freshman class, making sure that they have the supports that they need, that the teachers have the supports that they need to work with the students. And so we appreciate your willingness to expand the administrative ranks at the high school for just this one year using the ESSER dollars. I just think it's really important to ground this class, to give them extra support so that they will eventually fly and be very successful in their high school experience. In addition to those two positions that we believe are directly connected to social and emotional well-being, thank you for approving the district's new social-emotional curriculum. That's to the leadership of Dr. Walker. That was done on July 13th. And then also, Dr. Walker has been working behind the scenes to ensure that the 988's new nationwide suicide and crisis lifeline logo will be added on the district website. It will be put in the same place in the footer that we have the Safe Schools Helpline. And she'll be distributing additional information to our staff and to our students. We'll be sending out a Blackboard Connect call here shortly. So thank you, Dr. Walker, pulling together lots of pieces and parts. And all of this is actually related to school safety, if you think about it. Because if a student feels good about themselves, feels grounded, feels like they belong, they're less likely to become a student that is on the wrong path. And so thank you for your efforts. And I really believe that these pieces and parts related to the social-emotional wealth and health of our students really will go a long way in ensuring school safety on the campuses of our school district. And then finally, Board, as you know, we received awesome news yesterday from Governor Dewine. And that is that Ohio's K-12 School Safety Grant Program has determined that the Board of Education here will be recipients of about $208,000. And those dollars will be used directly for school safety initiatives. One of the things that Mr. Strickland and I have talked about is the expansion of our camera system, the expansion of our radio system. Those are two areas that I can say are areas that need some enhanced enhancement to them. And so as we gather with our administrative team tomorrow and Friday, one of the things that Mr. Strickland will be talking with to our team is this particular grant initiative. Because often, the building-level administrators see the soft spots, know what they are. Maybe we don't know what they are. And so we will engage them in that conversation. And then I understand that the grant application is supposed to be available to school districts here in the very short time. And so as soon as that is made available, we'll be applying and securing these dollars so that we can make those purchases here in the near future. Board, we're going to shift now to the discussion part about the pandemic. Before we do that, do you have any questions or comments about information I shared this evening up to this point about reopening the school year? Anything else that you think we should be mentioning to families as we get underway for the 22-23 school year?
The only thing I would mention, and it's just, I don't have any questions. I just want to make a comment with respect to the safety measures. You know, the board has had a lot of conversation regarding the extent to which we can provide as safe as possible an environment for our students and our staff and whatever resources are needed to do that. The extent to which we, you know, we use general fund dollars, we do. But as you can see and you've demonstrated here, we've been very strategic in leveraging our ESSER dollars to do as much as we can, stretch them as much as we can, but all for purposes of really delivering services to our students. And, you know, I hope I speak for the board that, you know, we don't, you know, we don't take safety lightly at all in light of the current climate of what's going on nationwide. So we want to make sure that we don't miss anything. We want to make sure that we consider every possible option that is available to us. And so I think that's pretty well demonstrated in what you've laid out here.
Thank you.
No comments on what you presented so far other than the fact that this is the time you start to see a lot of comments on social media questions. And just to remind our parents, the district website, the brand-new website, the brand-new app is the place to get your information. So while you may have questions thrown in on Facebook, doesn't necessarily mean you're going to get the right answer. So I would encourage people to check the website. If you haven't seen the new website, it's very mobile-friendly and the app as well. Sign up for the alerts. And hopefully, most of your questions can be answered there.
Thank you, Mr. Belber. I try to answer the questions as quickly as I can out of Facebook world, but it is hard to keep up with them. So it's good to have the website as the one-stop shop for all of these bits and pieces of information.
And just a quick comment about the app. I usually don't have notifications on for anything because they annoy me. But I have it on for our app. And I just like when it says, "What's new today? What's going on?" That I like to be made aware of. That's probably one of the only ones I keep turned on. But it's very helpful.
I think it's attractive, too. It's very, it's nicely done.
And I just wanted to say thanks again because I know I was also a concerned parent with a lot of different things that have been going on in the world with the schools and safety. And I appreciate our school, like, stepping up and getting security liaisons. And like, I know that was like one of the concerns, too, with parents about like, oh, after, like, you know, in-between stuff, like, what's going on? Like, and so to be able to have that, I think will put parents' ease at mind.
Thank you.
And just a quick note about the mobile app. People are loving it, so.
Good to know.
Yeah.
Mrs. Powers, can you take a minute and reiterate the backpacks of choice for the 7 through 12? They do not visit their lockers during the day. Am I correct in that? Because that's not in that writing. And I think that's an important piece that they're, they can bring their own book bag, but it stays in the locker. And that means that they would be carrying And that means that they would be carrying their books and papers and pencils and everything all day long. So, I think that just needs to make sure that we're very clear with that. The clear backpack, you can carry everything. I guess I'm answering your question for you, but to make sure, make sure we're right here, so that everybody is very clear on that, that they can carry the clear backpack with all their stuff in it all day long.
Right.
If they bring their own backpack, it stays in the locker, and they do not visit their locker during the day.
Right. And, you know, I told the story last year. This help came out of the Superintendent's Advisory Council, because the students said, "We need to carry our stuff in something. We have a lot of stuff to carry." And they recognize that the, you know, the black backpacks or the striped backpacks, you can't see inside of them. And honest, I understand, anything can happen, right? But for the peace of mind, I would say, the clear backpacks, for the majority of time, are being used for the right reasons. And that's to get their stack of books from one class to the next. So, thanks to our Superintendent's Advisory Council students, and the class of 22, the one that just left, were very outspoken about this. They wanted to be able to carry their things, but they also knew that the run-of-the-mill backpack wasn't going to work. So, that happened, COVID happened, school safety became even more important. And so, we've landed where we are here, and we think it works.
And then, just a quick comment. You mentioned something about the books. In general, they shouldn't really have to be carrying a whole stack of books, because most, as I understand, are available in online versions. And if a student wants a physical copy of a book, for the most part, they can. But it's, I wouldn't imagine they would have to have a hard book for every single class that they should be carrying around.
Right. So, many things have turned to the use of the Chromebook. You know, there's so many applications that the teachers are using. I think what the students need to do is to listen well to what the teachers are saying and offering as far as advice. They will tell the student if they need their hardback book, or if an app or an online platform is going to be used in the classroom. Sometimes, we have students who are just very studious, and they feel like they have to carry everything. Well, maybe that's not the case. And if a parent has a question about that, please reach out to your child's classroom teacher or the principal of that school, and they will help you understand what the student needs to carry and what the student wants to carry. It's two different things sometimes. And they're very much aware, the staff is very much aware, that campus and that campus are very large. And carrying a lot of things is very tiring to our adolescents. So, if you're unsure, please give the staff members a call, and they will help you understand what needs to be in those bookbags and what potentially we left at home.
Yes. Take, check your kid's bookbag and make sure they empty out all the extra food.
This is true. All right. So, Board, I just want to spend a few minutes talking about returning to campus in a COVID environment. As you know, the pandemic has not gone away. We've learned to live with the pandemic, I think, for the most part. I think folks have become very resilient. They know when they need to wear a mask. I had staff members traveling, my internal staff members traveling over the summer. When we gathered for our Monday morning meeting, they wore masks. Not that they had COVID, but they were being kind and considerate to those of us who have been here. And they were aware that maybe while they were on the plane or something, they may be asymptomatic. So, I think folks just really begin to understand how to operate. It's just taking a little bit of time. And so, this evening, I wanted to talk to you about how we're going to move forward in this pandemic and offer you an opportunity to give your advice to us. Because I am preparing the back-to-school mailer, and if there's anything that needs to be shared with our families, it's going to go in there. And so, that's the purpose for this next part of the presentation. First of all, Board of Education, the CDC is now talking about this BA5 variant as being the prominent variant of the new cases in our country and actually worldwide. So, you hear a lot about the BA5 variant. And according to the CDC, this BA5 subvariant of the Omicron virus is more transmissible. And so, it's really important that our families have a conversation with their children. Make sure you're washing your hands. Make sure you're sneezing in your sleep. Make sure that, you know, you wash your hands well. If you're going to cough, you know, turn your head or whatever. And so, it's very important that we continue to practice good hygiene habits. And washing hands has never been more important. The thing about the BA5 variant is it has characteristics or symptoms of the other variants that we have had pass through our community. So, fever, runny nose, coughing, sore throat, headaches, muscle pain, and fatigue are symptoms of BA5. And nothing necessarily new in that respect. In my research, what I do know is there are fewer individuals being hospitalized for this variant of the Omicron virus. So, that's, that's good news. And I think that's good news. But it's very contagious, and it's getting passed from one to the other in a pretty significant manner. I was on the Summit County Public Health website. I had been in contact with Donna Skoda just last Friday. She had hoped for guidance from the Ohio Department of Education. It is not coming. And so, they're putting together their own guidance for schools, but we won't get it till next Wednesday. And so, what I have here to share with you is information right off the website, where I pulled it for our own zip code. So, you can see where Twinsburg is relative to this information. As you can see, just from this chart, the virus is on the go here, and it's rising significant in the last month or so in our zip code. According to the next chart, you can see that in our community, we've had 5,714 cases that have been identified since July of '20. And so, significant amount of our residents have suffered through the virus. The next chart talks primarily about those who have been vaccinated. And so, in our community, about 85% of residents have been vaccinated. That's pretty good. And when we were at the state of the city back in, I think, April with Mayor Yates, he was very proud of the fact that the Twinsburg residents really stepped up and had been vaccinated. And you can see that in this chart, that is in fact the case, that the majority of the residents of the zip code 44087 have been vaccinated. That's, that's good news. Unfortunately, the next chart will indicate to you that this virus is on the go, and cases are increasing, which is problematic to healthcare officials, and just puts us on watch as a school district, that we just have to be careful as we begin to open the doors for school, that this hasn't gone away. We have to learn to live with the virus. It hasn't gone away. We've learned a lot about the virus, and we just have to continue to take some precautions. The next chart is from the Summit County Public Health. And you can see that Summit County itself is now in a state of high transmission with the BA5 variants. And this was the data from just last week. We received this on Friday, so it's pretty current. So, how do we operate? What are we going to do here with regard to the virus in students and staff? Board, remember back in last school year, we talked a lot about masks to stay, tests to play. And that is the guidance that the Summit County Public Health told me just yesterday that we should continue to keep in mind. So, I just want to remind everyone of a couple of things with this. We're going to talk about individuals here who are in close contact to a COVID-positive person. The advice here, and this is how we're going to operate, is if somebody is identified as a direct contact, they're going to need to wear a mask. And if they are symptomatic, they're going to need to stay home. But say you're not symptomatic. Say your friend next to you has been identified with COVID, but you're fine. But because of that direct contact, we're going to be asking that child or that staff member to wear a mask for 10 days from their last exposure of the COVID-positive person. We're going to ask the parent or the staff member to monitor the situation. And if the individual who is considered to be the close contact exhibits any symptoms of COVID, we're going to ask that person to please stay home and to take a test. And that's the best course of action that we can take. Really, wearing a mask when you have been in contact with somebody is not only taking care of you, but it's taking care of other people that you're around. So, that is, in a nutshell, what we're going to ask of our direct contact staff members and students. For our athletes and students who participate in extracurriculars, if they are in direct contact and they are not symptomatic, they are able, and we invite them to participate in football, or show choir, or art club, or whatever. But again, they're going to have to wear a mask for that 10-day period from point of exposure 10 days forward. With the exclusion of, if you are a football player, you are not going to be able to wear a mask if you're out on the football field, going to catch a football. Right? And so, you can see by the guidance offered here that wearing a mask when able, when you're participating in extracurricular events. But if you are in the middle of a play on the football field or soccer field, sometimes, wearing a mask makes it really hard to breathe. And so, you wouldn't wear it for that part of your participation in that sport. But when you're on the bench, or when you're on the bus going to Solon, perhaps, we're going to ask the students who are direct contacts to please, you know, be kind to not only yourself, but others, and wear a mask for that 10-day period of time. The county is suggesting that on day five after exposure, even if you're not symptomatic, to take a test. It's recommended, it is not required. And I do want to let the board know that just today, we got additional information about availability of test kits for the district. So, we have about 300 test kits still available here, and we will add to that surplus as soon as Jen Pinkney, who is our district nurse, gets back, and she helps me understand how many kits we should order. And we'll get those ordered and available to our families here shortly.
And just to add to that, you know, I don't know if anybody here has done this, you can get test kits from the U.S. Postal Service.
And then, finally, what happens if my child is positive, or I'm positive I'm a staff member? So, if you are positive, of course, good idea to take a test to confirm that. And when we're talking about taking a test, it's good to take a proctor test rather than an over-the-counter test, because a proctor test gives you the more valid results. If you test positive, we ask you to isolate, stay home from school, stay home from work for five days. And you count the next day as day one. Okay? So, today, I tested positive, tomorrow is day one. You are allowed to rejoin your, your teaching partners or your classmates on day six, if your symptoms improve, and if you don't have a fever. And that they have to remain masked for the period of 10 days, from the day that you test positive or your first symptoms, for 10 days, with the next day being day one. And that way, we're hoping to keep the majority of our kids and our staff here on campus, allowing them to participate in the activities, but also, again, keeping everyone else as safe as we possibly can, and hopefully, away from that virus. Any questions about masks to stay, tests to play? We've gotten pretty good at this, I think. And, and, you know, Jen Pinkney's been off all summer. She needed a long summer. She had such a busy year last year. She does a great job, our district nurse, and so, she will make sure that she keeps in contact with families, and that we make the right reports, and hopefully, it'll keep everybody on the even keel. Now, Board, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions for scenarios. My intention is to reopen the school year. Everyone's on campus, everyone's being careful. We follow COVID protocols, we follow masks to stay, tests to play. But at the end of last school year, the board had certain restrictions in place. And I need to know where you stand on it tonight, so that I can communicate to our families. And in those areas of visitors and volunteers, chaperones, school assemblies, and field trips, including our overnight trips. Last year, the requirement for all of our visitors was that you had to wear masks when you were on campus. Just, that was the protocol that we followed. I don't know what your opinion is for the coming school year. I know that all summer, everyone has been in and out, intermingling. Individuals who have the ability to be vaccinated and boosted have done that, if they wanted to do that. That's their choice. Didn't know if you have an opinion about these particular important parts of our school, families being the visitors, volunteers, and chaperones, and how you would like us to move forward into this coming school year?
All right. Everybody's looking around, and I'll go first. It's once again disappointing that the Ohio Department of Education provides no guidance. So, the school boards and administration, we're getting pretty used to going out on the limb and having to make these decisions without direction from the professionals that should be giving us direction. That being said, I'm open to all of what you have on the screen, being allowed to attend. I'm curious, though, you know, if anyone's had to visit a nursing home in the past year, there's usually a screening process and challenge questions. I don't know if we do that, or if we could do that at the Welcome Center. You know, have you been exposed to COVID? Have you, have, just basic challenge questions that a lot of facilities are using now. And I don't know if that's something to, you know, not to decide tonight, but is that something we could do that maybe for discussion? With that, I'd be open to allowing everybody back in, hoping that people can be on their own reconnaissance. And, you know, being that everybody's been open all summer, you know, and it's on the rise. And it's not, I think, for lack of protocols, I think it's, again, another mutation that has gotten very transmissible.
But it's interesting, if you walked in, if you remember walking in tonight, the city still has their clipboard with those challenge questions, where my stepdad is in the assisted living. I still have to wear a mask in there, and I have to answer the challenge questions and take my temperature. So, that hasn't gone away in many places. It's an interesting thought.
No, but I would concur with Rob. That was exactly my thinking. You know, that maybe the challenge questions, but, you know, allowing people, I mean, because, you know, it's been a while since the end of the school year, and everybody's been out and about. People have been places. You look around, and, you know, the exception is a mask and not the rule, where it was the other way around. So, the extent to which we do get guidance that tells us to do this for this reason, this board has always kind of followed that guidance. But until such time, you know, I'm, I'm open.
Everybody's good with the suggestion, then, at the Welcome Centers, our visitors, when they're checking in.
Just a good step, reminder, you know.
People are pretty conditioned, you know, with doing that. I don't think that's intrusive.
No, I think it's, it's, it's just a good reminder, because while we go through the rules tonight, the rules get confusing. And you forget about the rules until someone in your household tests positive. Well, then, it's the rule. What is this rule? And then, you know, it's, it gets very confusing to determine, what is day one? What is day two? How many days? Well, the CDC says this, but this one says that. So, I think it's better to just have a nice little reminder for everybody, both in signage, and then maybe when they check in. You know, because I think everybody that you have on here pretty much has to come through. I would say, with the exception of, like, a basketball, I mean, where it would not be possible to just challenge every single person, have every single player sign in, game would be over before anybody got their seat. So, I think we have to, you know, be reasonable to that. And again, as we always say, until something changes.
So, during the school days, what we're talking about?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think it's during the school day, and then, like I said, your concerts. I mean, it's, it's not that it's not feasible, but I don't think you can run everybody through a check-in process.
Okay. Everyone's fine with that?
Yes.
Mrs. Travish, were you going to say something, I thought?
No, I agree. I think that as parent volunteers and people coming in, I think that they'll be very happy to not have to put a mask on to come in. And in the reverse of that, just know that if you are not feeling good, please don't come in. And so, we don't have to reverse our decisions tonight. So, as long as everyone's working together on that process, you know, let's let it go until we, hopefully, we won't have to. But if we would, we'll take base it down the road.
I did have one question, though. As far as volunteers within the classroom, we may have some teachers who have immunocompromised situations. Is, I would assume that's at their discretion?
Well, it's, it's always up to a teacher to invite a volunteer or not. And so, I think giving the teacher the information that you can say you'd rather not, or you only want one volunteer in your classroom instead of five, or however that is. I think that that gives them the authority to make that decision. And teachers will make good decisions, given that chance.
All right. Thank you.
Well, that, sorry, but that brings me to think about, what about the parties for this?
Right. I think we're a little bit of a distance away from parties. The first one would be the fall festivals, usually in October. And so, what I would ask is, let's get underway, and let's talk with the staff and the principals, and to come to some conclusion. Because what, what work at Dodge is different than Bissl and Wilcox. And so, and of course, that doesn't happen at the two-second-year school. So, if you can pause on that, I can revisit that with them, and we can get an answer as we get closer to that part of the calendar.
Sounds good.
Okay. The thing about the school assemblies, that question came from one of our PTAs, and just wanting to make sure, they want to plan ahead, they want to plan for the assemblies, they have to put a down payment down off in, and they, they just want to make sure that it's okay with you if the children are together in the gym for an assembly auditorium or whatever, so they can make the plans. I said I would ask that question tonight to you. Okay? All right. Okay. So, in conclusion, then, I mentioned this already, our test kits are available. Nurse Pinkney doesn't get back to work until 16th of this month. So, if a family has a circumstance where they need a test kit, between now and the 16th, please call the Board of Education office. Mrs. Delgram has taken charge of all the test kits, and she does a great job for us in that respect. We ask that you please don't call us for test kits because you have to travel. That's not what they're for. These are circumstances where families may have symptoms related to COVID, and they just need to check it. And if, you know, we allow that to go out the door for folks who are traveling, we're not going to have those test kits for the other reason. And then, we really do need them for that. So, that concludes the presentation. I really respect what you've done here this summer, Board, with your safety measures, always caring for the students, making sure the right things are in place for them, the right staff members. And thank you for your flexibility. Thank you for allowing us to use the S R funds the way we are. And the grant money, as it's received, is going to go a long way in another layer of protection for everybody who is a member of our family. So, thank you.
So, opening up a little tiny can of worms. I'm just curious on testing, HIPAA, legal, what we could do. You know, we have this proclivity of testing, you know, we have these tests. Is there any, you know, way testing can be done at the school with respect to someone's in the clinic, they're not feeling good? Because they're minors?
That's a great question, and the answer is no, because you have to have the right license to test. Our nursing staff does not hold the right license.
So, a home test, obviously, wouldn't, even though it could be done, it just, you're not a testing, okay.
No, the nurses here, the only.
Yeah, I know we talked about it a while ago.
Yeah, and she doesn't have the right license to do that, so we are not permitted to do that here.
Could we have a, a storage of these kits in each building that could go home when someone's not feeling well? To test when they get home, if they don't have a kit at home?
Our process works, and so, we work in tandem with Ms. Pinkney. The parents know to pick them up at the board office.
Okay. I was just thinking if they went home, if they like you, could.
They don't go home with the children. The parent has to pick them up.
That's what I meant. I mean, if the parent's picking up a sick child, could they pick up a kit?
They can stop at the board office.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Our process has worked quite well now, since the pandemic happened. It might be inconvenient, we have to keep track of these test kits. And so, if they're in one place, being at the board office, there's a process that works between Kelly Delgram and Jen Pinkney. Dr. Walker's in the middle of that, I'm in the middle of it. And so, I really don't want to disrupt the process that's working and working well at this point. But I appreciate the thought.
And just a quick comment, we're obviously in a different place than we were last year. The younger ones now are able to get vaccinated, for those who choose to. So, that's, you know, that is, I'm sure, comforting for some of the families who, at this point last year, were, you know, concerned about the whole masking situation and not being vaccinated. So, hopefully, that will lessen some of the cases that we've seen. And, and I know some, these families are getting these kids out there and vaccinated. And I guess, just a quick comment, because we came across this situation several times at work today. When these children are getting vaccinated and are due for another vaccination, we've had cases where they've been exposed, and before they're due for their second one. Just simple word of advice, call your pediatrician for guidance on when to get that next vaccination.
Yeah, I think they're supposed to come out with another booster, different booster. And so, you know, we are not medical professionals, so we don't give the medical advice. We can share what we learned from Summit County Public Health more than any other place in the O D H, when it's appropriate. But you're right, parents need to be in touch with their pediatricians. That is the best place to go for advice when it comes to those kinds of things. Thank you.
Okay. So, pretty sure we don't have any cards for remonstrance. So, I'll move on to item H, which is the treasurer's report and recommendations. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read H1 through 4. H1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, regular meeting of July 13th, 2022, and special meeting of July 7th, 2022, as sent to the board under separate cover. Two, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the following financial reports for the month of June 2022, bank reconciliation, general fund, financial summary report, and financial report by fund, as sent to the board under separate cover. Three, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the check register for the month of June 2022. The total, including payroll, is $4,638,445. And four, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the authorization of a then-and-now certificate, as per Ohio Revised Code 5705.41, for a stale dated invoices from Peter Colleo and Markakis. Issuance determines funds were then available at the time of the allowable expense, and the amounts of purchases are necessary to meet the obligation at the time of the order or contract, and is now, therefore, lawfully appropriated and available for such purposes, as sent to the board under separate cover. Do I have a motion for H1 through 4?
No.
So, a move by Mrs. Crawford. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second by Mrs. Davis. Second by Mrs. Davis. Any discussion? Mrs. Rosnaya, would you mind just providing a little clarification or explanation for item 4, the then-and-now certificate? Kind of what that means?
Yeah, where is it, invoices dated March of 2022, maybe a couple of April ones as well? The amount over, well, over the $3,000 allowance that I would be able to prove, we did not have a purchase order open ready for those expenditures right now in July when the invoices came in with the March and April dates. So that's why I need to ask the board's permission to pay the third party for those expenses incurred in March and April based on the research that we've done within the department at the board office. We did not previously receive those invoices. We don't come until July. So this is why we need to, if we wish to honor them and pay them, I need the board to approve.
Thank you for that explanation.
They do total up to about $18,000.
Okay.
So I believe there are about four or five invoices.
Okay. Thanks for that explanation. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Mrs. Rosnaya, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. And motion carries 5-0. Next is action items personnel, items I, 1 through 3. Without objection, I'll read them together. I, 1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Two, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, condition, uh, terms and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And three, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Do I have a motion for I, I 1 through 3?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Felber. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Discussion?
Yes, I would like to go on the record to say that I am going to vote for this section of the agenda tonight. As a reminder, at a prior board meeting, the board did approve a partnership with the ESC and I did work there for our support services. I recuse myself from that particular vote. However, for tonight's agenda, I see this as simply giving transparency to the who is going to do the job. I don't see that as a conflict for me. It's, again, being transparent to us and the community as to the name of a person who is going to be placed in that position. And in reference to Mr. Madden's adjustment, his employment in our district predates my time here as a board member. His service to our district is instrumental in our internal workings of our district. And I believe this adjustment aligns to the level of his responsibilities. So I will be voting tonight.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Mrs. Travis. Any other comments? Okay, Mrs. Rosnaya, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. The motion carries 5-0. Okay, I'll move on to J, action items, new business. Without objection, I will read them together. J1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the attached listing of technology items to be deleted from inventory per the attached exhibit. Two, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the agreement for school counseling graduate student practicum internship placement with John Carroll University for the placement of a school counseling graduate students in Twinsburg City School District, as sent to the board under separate cover. Three, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the training affiliation agreement with Case Western Reserve University, Department of Nutrition, and the School of Medicine for the placement of university students in the Twinsburg City School District, as sent to the board under separate cover. Four, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the conditional employment of Dominique Sanders as a substitute teacher effective August 15th, 2022, pending the Ohio Department of Education's issuance of a teaching license. Mr. Sanders will be compensated at the special substitute rate equivalent to be a Step Zero through September 30th, 2022, per the terms outlined in the negotiated agreement with the Twinsburg Education Association. Five, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following police officers to provide security at events for the '22-'23 school year as needed at a rate of $41 per hour. And the names of the officers are listed within. Six, that the Twinsburg Board of Education, in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 3313.90, hereby specifies the district's intent not to provide career technical education for all 7th and 8th graders enrolled in the Twinsburg City School District. However, the Twinsburg City School District will provide career technical programming for interested 8th graders, 8th grade students via Project Lead the Way course offerings at RB Chamberlain Middle School. And seven, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a revised administrative salary schedule effective August 1st, 2022, per the attached exhibit. Do I have a motion for J 1 through 7? So moved by Mrs. Travis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Rosnaya, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. The motion carries 5-0. Next is J8. Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the agreement with Crockett Physical Therapy LLC, 9361 Ridgeview Drive, Macedonia, Ohio 44056, effective August 1st, 2022, through July 31st, 2023, to provide physical therapy services to students with disabilities enrolled in the district at a fee not to exceed $105,000. This is a general fund expenditure as sent to the board under separate cover. Do I have a motion for J8? So moved by Mrs. Crawford. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Travis. Discussion?
Yes, just one point from my colleagues. I'm not sure how many years this company's gone back in service, Twinsburg. But since this last contract, I've become friends with them. And so in the order of transparency, I'm just going to abstain from this vote. And that's why it's broken out on the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Felber. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Rosnaya, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mr. Faber?
Abstain.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Mr. Curtis?
Yes, and that motion carries 4 with one abstention. J9 and 10. J9, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the agreement with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio for the '22-'23 school year to provide up to 25 hours of audiology services at $111 per hour, 135 hours of services for the hearing impaired at $108 per hour, and 90 hours of services for visually impaired at $111 per hour. This will be a general fund expense as sent to the board under separate cover. And then 10, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the memorandum of understanding with the Ohio Online Learning Program, sponsored by the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio, to provide online curriculum as needed to students for the '22-'23 school year, as sent to the board under separate cover. Do I have a motion for J9 and 10?
Seven.
So moved by Mrs. Davis. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Second by Mrs. Crawford. Discussion?
Okay, so now I'm going to flip and go the other direction. So since I am an employee, to be transparent, although these are wonderful services and we need them, I gain no financial fiduciary gain from this. However, again, to avoid any appearance of impropriety, I will abstain from these two pieces.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Travis, for that explanation. Any other comments or comments, any comments or questions? Okay, a hearing now. Mrs. Rosnaya, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Abstain.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes, and that motion passes 4 with one abstention. Next is K, miscellaneous. Do we have anything for miscellaneous?
Just a reminder that August 13th is the PTA Council Spirit Wear Sale. So they'll have a lot of Twinsburg merchandise that you can buy as well as they'll have a chalk, um, chalk walk outside for you to participate and get some fun prizes and a great way to sign up to be on the PTA that day. And then I would just say, we talked earlier about the mobile app. Just continue to look on there because there's a lot of information. Like we mentioned before, there's, for those going back to school, there's like meet the teacher nights and orientation and stuff like that. So just make sure that you're looking at the calendar.
And also some people I see, you know, social media questions back and forth about, you know, when does this happen, what does this, you know, what do we do? Once meet the teacher, same thing, mobile app. And also we have our Facebook page too that is informative. So I'm sure by now people have hopefully peeked at it, but it's, it's, it highlights a lot of things happening in our school and highlights some staff members from time to time too, which is very nice. In relationship to the Twins Day weekend, I believe there are still some openings for some help on Saturday. So if you have missed that opportunity and still have some time to give a donation of time to that, that would be very good and help with the cause. And, you know, the Tiger Band, who are in the parade on Saturday morning. They are out, the uniforms are out, they are looking good and sounding great.
So a quick shout out to Scott Efros, a former, I believe, pitcher for Twinsburg, who was, was with the Cubs. Don't get upset with me, he got picked up by the Yankees. But he is going to be representing Twinsburg still, just like the young lady that was before us. So congratulations to Scott. And, you know, maybe he'll get traded back home at some point.
Very cool.
Wants to Tiger Hall, is it?
Yeah.
And since we're celebrating alum, I just want to shout out to Brad Stuper. He plays soccer for San Antonio. He has taken the lead on some very kind efforts to support Rob Elementary School and through something called The Laundry Project. And so he has been posting some things on his social media platform. But kudos to Brad. He played soccer here for our boys team and has gone on now to play professional soccer. Just a super great person, great family. And we congratulate him for caring about other people outside of his, you know, outside of his family. So thank you to Brad for what you're doing.
Excellent. Okay, we'll move on to executive session. We do have a need to enter into executive session. So we'll enter into executive session at 8:29 PM to discuss employment, discipline, and compensation of public employees as per Board of Education Policy 0166A and to renew negotiations with public employees concerning compensation or other terms and conditions of employment as per Board of Education Policy 0166E. I will make the motion to go into executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Crawford. Mrs. Rosnaya, roll call please.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Okay, we are now in executive session. I do not anticipate that we will conduct further business once we reconvene. Thank you.